Five meeting of the Grafton Planning Board to order. We have one of our members and our staff remote, so we'll have a roll call.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Wood.
Go ahead, do it.
Do you want me to do it? No, do you want me to do the roll call or do you just Justin want to take it over? I'm happy to do it. Uh, all right, Mr. Wood.
Present.
Mr. Palermo.
Present.
Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Hassinger.
I'm here.
Mr. Mead.
I'm here also.
Uh, Mr. Dallamoli is here and uh, also joining us right is Natalia Hotworts, correct on staff?
Present. Yes, present.
Okay. Natalia is not with us tonight.
She is here, but she has.
Hmm?
She's on.
Oh, no, she's there, but no, um Fiona Fiona is not here at all. Um, good, she get a little time. Uh, okay, um, first item is public input. If anybody has anything to say to us about something within our purview, that's not otherwise on the agenda tonight, this is your chance, raise your hand either in the room. Or from Zoom. And I in- I include even people up here.
Yes.
Yes, if any of us have something that qualifies as public input and.
Now, what gives you a chance to talk about things that?
Yes.
You might wanna be able to talk about, we might have a few minutes, might even return to public input if necessary.
Alright, so we have no hands raised on Zoom. No hands raised in the room.
So we'll move right along to item two A. Uh, vote to approve the submission of a draft application for the District Local Technical Assistance, DLTA, twenty twenty-six request for resources for the project, project purpose, Grafton Flexible Development Incentivization Finalization. We have, uh, Mike. M- m- Muggum, M- Muggum, um, uh, Brown from CMRPC to help us with this. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, good evening, thanks very much, um. The, it's, it's Mawn Brown, by the way, um. The, I, I mean, I think that this is probably not new to any of you. Uh, this is, is to, to pick up where we left off with the flexible development, uh, project. Um, because we, we needed more information last time around about what the Attorney General would think about the Acton, uh, bylaw, which effectively mandates flexible development. That information is, is not yet ready, the, the Attorney General, well, last time I looked, uh, which was a couple of days ago, has not yet commented on the Acton bylaw. Uh, so we, we need, uh, some more information. And then I believe that we, we need to have, uh, the opportunity to, to interact and, and really think through, perhaps talk through what the options are and, and where Grafton wants to go with this process. Uh, we also need to look at, um, the types of incentives that are, uh, available and, and have discussions with you about what kind of, of, uh, incentives you might be interested in entertaining. So what this really is, is, is simply to, uh, agree to the request for, uh, some more money from the DLTA fund so that we can, can put that project to bed and, and draft whatever type of bylaw, uh, you as a board decide would be appropriate, either, either something new or, or, or minor amendments to your existing bylaw. Um, but, but we need to have some discussions about what you want to, to do with that. So that's, that's what we're looking for, the process is simply, um, that there needs to be a letter of commitment signed by somebody who, who is authorized to sign that. If, if Fiona is authorized to sign that, she can do that when she gets back. The meeting, I mean, the closing date for this is December the tenth. Uh, so we need a letter signed by somebody before December the tenth. And then we'll also ask Fiona if she wouldn't mind, um, attending the, the Physical Development Committee meeting on Zoom so that she is available to assist in answering any questions that the, the members of the Physical Development Committee might have. And, uh, Bob, you have many more years of experience of the Physical Development Committee and the DLTA process than I have. So, uh, you might want to, to elaborate, uh, more than I can, um, thank you.
If anybody has any questions, I can tell you about it. I've been there since it started, voted on every all the money. It's usually pretty well structured. Um, depends on how much we're asking for, of course, but I, you know, I'd say, let's ask. Any questions?
Yeah. Assuming, ba- based on what we discussed the last time the board discussed this, I think the, I'm, I would assume that the board is interested in pursuing this and therefore that, uh, I would move that the board approve the submission of the draft application for DLTA for the aforementioned project.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
All right, Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Palermo.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Dallamoli votes aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, thanks.
We'll look forward.
Thank you.
I'll be looking forward to seeing this along with what I hear is a long list of requests this time. People are beginning to catch on.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll look forward to seeing this work completed sometime during the year.
Mm-hmm.
It will take however long it takes.
Indeed.
Just about that. Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to, um, special permit twenty twenty-five dash eleven slash SPA and site plan approval, um, for forty-two Browns Road. Hmm, we closed that hearing, so we have a draft decision. Does anybody have, has everybody looked at the draft decision?
Yes, I've read through the draft decision and I have no comments on it, looks good to me.
Well, well, does anybody else have? Anything?
Just as a reminder to the board, there was some updates to this since this was first posted on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
That came today to us and those changes are in blue on the screen here, the screen shared. Nothing that, I reviewed it and I don't have any further comments though.
No comments, I have no comments.
Okay, um.
I move that the board grant the decision with favorable findings, granting the requested waivers and with all the conditions, all is drafted.
Second.
Moved in second.
And that a member of the board be authorized, the chair be, chair be authorized to sign on behalf of the board.
The chair mentioned to me that he would prefer to not be the one to sign and I'm willing to come in.
Okay, so remember, so the motion then will read as Mr. Wood be authorized to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Palermo.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Dallamoli votes aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to, to C, uh, re- request for, uh, a decision on, uh, special permit SP twenty twenty-five dash twelve slash SPA and site plan approval. Nine Miriam Road. We, uh, I think we closed that hearing.
Yes, we did.
We have a draft decision.
We do. And like the prior one, this also was edited today.
Mm-hmm.
The one that's currently on, on. Any comments about it?
I have a couple of comments here.
Oh, go for it.
So, looking at finding F eight. This is not a major issue, but for clarification, the finding as written states that the aerials on the G, GIS, assuming that means aerial imagery incorrectly show the driveway, in fact, the aerial imagery available on US shows the correct location of the driveway, but it is, the, the driveway location as shown on the town GIS in the absence of the aerial imagery is out of date. So my, my, I suggest a minor change in wording to read, the town GIS incorrectly shows the driveway on the east side, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The driveway was relocated to the left of the home, et cetera. And the town GIS is outdated and a note was made to that effect. So I think that, uh, it's probably worth clarifying that it's, it's not the aerial imagery that's out of date, it's the sketch of the driveway location that's shown on the town GIS. So.
Everybody agree that's a good idea?
Yep.
Natalia, did you get that?
Yes, I got it, all set.
Okay.
Yep, if you want, you can run that by me after the meeting or, you know, tomorrow, whenever you get it revised to make sure that, you know, if, if I have.
I'll send you the wording.
Anything confusing. And the other.
No, I got it, but I'll send you the, um, I'll send you the copy before I have somebody, uh, before I have Justin sign it, now's that.
The, the, the next finding I want to mention is F fifteen. And this is just kind of a, kind of a minor point, but the board does not have, uh, a policy as such, uh, reg- regarding the accessory apartment remaining in the family or anything. Uh, it might be, depending on exactly what this is meant to refer to, uh, the board's past practice has been that the accessory apartment be, uh, limited to family occupancy.
Right, um, po- policy would be considered to be, or people would be looking for something that was written down and voted.
Yeah, the, the board has no form, formal policy with this.
So just to clarify, Mr. Robbins, I think this change was in effect from something I suggested at the last public hearing on this subject where
Hmm.
the, in the spring, the applicant is likely to transfer ownership of the primary property.
Yep.
To their son and they want to be able to do the construction and everything without having to refile and wait, you know, extra days and such, so.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, that's pretty clearly conveyed by the remainder of the text in this finding. It's just that the word policy is inappropriate here.
Practice, custom.
And, and in fact, in this case here, this is really, this isn't really referring to the board's past, past practice. This is more related to the applicant's request that they be allowed to transfer ownership within the family without voiding the special permit. And most of the rest of this finding, I think, makes that sufficiently clear. It, you come back to this in condition C five.
Mr. Chair Natalia does have her hand back up.
Yes, Natalia.
I just wanted to clear, um, do you want it to say practice or do you want it to just say the applicant agreed that the accessory apartment remain, will remain in the family?
I think that would be good, the way you just stated it.
The applicant agreed that the accessory apartment will remain in the family.
Yeah, because this, this is not something that has come up in past applications.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then if everybody's comfortable with that, nobody has anything else, I want to go to C five. And there, I think the, uh, the wording seemed to me be, to be a little bit awkward. I mean, the intent is sufficiently clear, but I would propose simplifying the wording a little bit to say, the special permit and site plan approval runs with the land, provided that ownership remains within the family of the applicant. Otherwise, the special permit, the site plan approval becomes null and void, in which case the new owner must complete a new application to the board to use the space as an accessory apartment.
Sounds okay.
Sounds appropriate to me, I'm fine with that.
Natalia, you okay?
Yes.
And, and just to be clear, so if they did not go through that process, then it just becomes another room in a single-family house, correct?
Correct. And this, and this is consistent with all of our accessory apartment special permits is that when the, when the property is sold, the permit for the accessory apartment ceases to exist. You know, the, uh, so the accessory apartment effectively becomes a part of the home, although it's obviously, you know, all likelihood still configured as an accessory apartment. The new owner, should they want to use it as an accessory apartment, you know, brings a special permit application to us.
Yeah.
And again, this is, this is the board's past practice, it's not, it's not defined in any, any board policy. But that fact is sort of irrelevant here, we just want to, you know, here we're just stating how we want this to work.
Think that's good enough, this is gonna get more complicated now with ADUs, um, when they get stirred into the mix.
And Natalia has her hand up again.
Natalia.
Natalia.
I just wanted to point out that C six kinda covers what Greg was just talking about. Yes?
Yep.
That, thanks, yeah.
Anything further, Mr. Robbins?
That's, that's all I had.
Anybody else? If not, we could have a motion.
Someone's gotta make a motion.
Don't they do?
All right, I will, I will move that the board grant this special permit and site plan approval with favorable findings, granting all requested waivers and all the conditions as drafted with the changes noted during this discussion. And that Mr. Wood be authorized to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Moved in seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Palermo.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Dallamoli votes aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Chair, just to say out loud, I know we have at least one member of the Sherry family on, on the call, sitting in. Just wanted to say that I will likely be signing this on Wednesday for the staff and once that is complete, they can, they'll, they'll be reaching out and confirming the next steps and how the process works, is my understanding.
Okay. I guess it's okay. All right, um, correspondence. Nothing on correspondence.
Nothing caught my eye.
Uh, reports from Planning Board representatives on town committees and CMRPC. I've been busy up there as usual at CMRPC, does anybody have anything?
Uh, yes, the, uh, the Open Space and Recreation Committee, to which I am the board's representative, held a meeting last week. Not, there's not really a lot to report out of that, except that, um, sort of following up on the town's designation of the Oakmont Farms Open Space, twenty-seven Milford Road, as land under the control of the Conservation Commission. The committee is continuing to look at other instances where the town may wish to designate, formally designate land as conservation land. We have identified eight subdivision open space land, some of them are multiple parcels, but eight subdivisions where the open space was to have been designated as conservation land, but the documentation of that never actually happened. So these eight are, they're all identified as open space, but in no case were they officially restricted to use as conservation or recreation or open space. So we are in the process of putting together a recommendation that for these eight parcels that the town, probably town meeting vote to place them under control of the Conservation Commission, uh, or otherwise protect them as open space or recreation land. Now, we're asking, suggesting that the Recreation Commission should be, should look at those to identify any recreational opportunities that might exist on that land. And for future reference, we'd like to make sure that whenever subdivision land is intended to become open, conservation land, say, I think in all these cases, except possibly one, it was under flexible development, that, that often hasn't been followed through in the past, so we want, we would like it. We, we'd like to make sure that in the future, land that's supposed to become conservation land actually does. But we've got, we've got some recommendations, then we've also, we've also identified two parcels of tax title land that the Conservation Commission has suggested should be placed under control of the Conservation Commission, since in both cases, they have but existing conservation land. So the Open Space and Rec Committee is gonna have some recommendations, it will more than likely come up at the May Town Meeting.
Has, has the tax title land come into town possession?
Yes, in all, in all cases of the ones we looked at, the eight subdivision open space and the two tax title lands, they are all owned by the town. It's just that the town has not formally given them the protection from development that they ought to have. You can talk about, we can, we can someday talk about some of the subdivision lands that should have been donated to the town but never was. There's still some, some loose ends there, all of this has, yeah, it goes back to the, maybe back to the late eighties, certainly into the nineties. That, uh, yeah, somehow between all the boards that get involved in these, someone somewhere along the line has dropped the ball.
Eight times.
Not, not made sure that things were fully, properly, properly protected as conservation land. So we're trying to catch up on all that.
Yeah, we didn't, you know, we put in the flexible, what, ninety, spring of ninety-one?
Ninety-one.
Um, and that's where most of this comes from.
Yes. Indeed.
What did I just think of?
So that's what the Open Space and Rec Committee has been doing lately.
Hmm, um, does anybody else have any reporting? I'm, maybe here we can pick it up. I've seen postings about a new, whatever it is, fitness thing here, someplace around.
It's on the end of the senior center. It's on the end of the senior center.
Where the barbecues.
Yep.
Where the barbecues used to be.
Cause I looked tonight, I guess that had to be it, but when I came in, I didn't, I, I didn't catch it, uh, in the dark. But, uh, anyway, people, apparently everyone's trying to let everyone know about this, this new, uh, capability. Does anybody know the story enough to tell us some of it? Okay.
The, the extent that I know is Blue Cross Blue Shield put in some money toward the, to the development and building of that. I don't know how much or a percentage.
Okay.
And they did a ribbon cutting ceremony recently, yes.
Yeah, there was, there was, in my Facebook, there was a whole lot of fuss.
Yeah.
Um, okay. All we have left are the two hearings.
Yeah, you have no, no bills, no minutes. No, no staff report unless Natalia wants to give us her view of a staffed report.
Just plugging along, trying to keep up with, um, what's going on in the office until Fiona gets back. Um, I did notice that the posting for the new admin did go on, uh, online, just so that, in case you're wondering. So maybe we'll be able to hire somebody in the next so many weeks or whatever.
Okay, well.
And we have about three minutes.
Yeah, maybe two and a half, but, um, three minutes. Um, never rely on the watch. Um, three minutes, we'll, uh, just take a break for three minutes.
Smoke them if you got them.
Just not in here.
Right.
It's a public meeting, not a hearing.
Thank you, yes.
We still read the, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, doesn't hurt even if we don't have to.
Exactly. That's why I was leaning towards also reading it the next meeting that we actually.
Get the recording in.
Good.
Let's try it, just get practicing.
When I say it this time, I'll make Greg do it next time.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, there you go. Hey Greg, hear that?
What am I saying next time?
Probably the Tufts hearing notice or meeting notice.
Because that one requests a continuance.
Yeah, I'm still gonna read.
All right, so that's next time, yeah.
I'll still read it today, but we probably should just read it next week, I don't know if we need to, but. Thirty seconds, I think.
Ten seconds.
Your timer's better than mine.
Mm-hmm, well, the internet, I, I rely on the internet.
So do I, but I don't have seconds.
Oh, well. You have one of those, uh. You have one of those, uh. No, that's a, that's a proper kind of computer. Um, okay, we're back in session. We're about to take up item, uh, six A. Which is. The request for a project plan review, PPR twenty twenty five dash oh three. Um, at Seven Jumbo's Path. Trustees of Tufts College, AKA Tufts University.
Excuse me, so the Grafton Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Commencing at seven thirty PM in Conference Room A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. To consider an application for a project plan review for the Coming School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University. Pursuant to sections nine dot six dot one dot two of the Grafton zoning bylaw. For the construction of a Coming School Learning Center building on property located at Seven Jumbo's Path. As shown as Grafton Assessor's map twenty one lots one A, one hundred A, one oh one A, and one oh two A. Said property is located in, in Office Light Industry O L I and Campus Development Overlay C D O zoning district. The applicant owner is Tufts, is trustees of Tufts College, AKA Tufts University. Copies of the application and plan are available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours. Or on the town of Grafton website at W W W dot Grafton dash M A dot gov on the Planning Department Development Projects webpage.
The applicant has requested that the public meeting be continued to December eighth, twenty twenty five. Uh, exhibit five on the project page. This will allow time for the Planning Director to have written the review memo and for Jeff Walsh of Graves Engineering. To have hopefully provided the board with a peer review report. The peer review funds have been received and Jeff is starting his review process. We need to vote to continue the public meeting until December eighth at seven thirty PM.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board grant the public, grant the, the written continuation request to, to December eighth, twenty twenty five at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Palermo.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hesseger.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. D, Alamo, A, both, aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll see them next time. Okay, that brings me to. Six B, request for site plan approval, S P A twenty twenty five dash zero four. Nine and twelve West Street. At ADEA Investments LLC. Uh, slash Roman Catholic Bishop of Worcester is the applicant and the owner.
Pursuant to section one dot three dot three of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaw. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Commencing at seven thirty PM in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road. To consider an application for a site plan approval for a childcare slash daycare center. On property located at nine and twelve West Street. And shown as Grafton Assessor's map seventy four lots twenty five and thirty one. Said property is located in residential R forty and residential multifamily R M F zoning districts. The applicant is Ada Investments LLC and the owner is the Roman Catholic Bishop of Worcester. A copy of the application materials is available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours. Or on the Town of Grafton website at W W W dot Grafton dash M A dot gov on the Planning Department Development Products webpage.
Okay, Natalia, I could read the notes that you gave me. Or maybe in, it's, uh, what, Assistant Planner, maybe you wanna do that.
Sure, um, so the applicant, Priyanka Joshi will be attending, she's in the audience and she'll be presenting. The application and answer any questions, the architect Jessica Cargill is also attending, but she's attending via Zoom. So a memo was provided by the Planning Director Fiona, it's listed as exhibit five on the project page. And the applicant submitted a written response today to all the Planning Director's questions and issues, and that is listed as exhibit nine. On the, uh, project page. So I think, um, Priyanka's already sitting, she'll be able to present the application.
Thank you Natalia, uh, thank you everyone for giving us the opportunity to be here today and, um. Looking at our application, um, I am Priyanka Joshi, that's my husband Hitesh Joshi, we both, um. Own kitty time in Marlboro, we have been running the center for last eight years. And we always wanted to expand our business and, um, Grafton is one of the towns that we really like, we live close to it, we live in North Borough, so it's only twenty five minutes for us. Um, we came across the listing for the Roman Catholic Church and it is a perfect building for converting into a childcare center. It has enough space outside to make playgrounds, it is close to the town center, close to residential areas, so that's why we are interested in that building. And we were hoping to, uh, do the renovation and turn it into a childcare center. Do you have any questions for us?
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Um, I'm, I'm looking at your site plan that, uh, that your, uh, that your architect did.
Yes.
Um, it, it's. Uh, don't get me wrong, I think you, what you're gonna do here is gonna be great, it's gonna, you know, great for the town and everything like that, but. You, your site plan is not even close to being. Close to, to, to really anything, I mean. Um, you know, we, we just dealt with a, with a, uh, another childcare center and, um. You don't show any places where you, you're gonna drop off children. Uh, there's, there's no, there's no design or no, no narrative that shows where you're going to turn around. Like if you drive up West Street and you drop off someone at the, at the door. There's no place to turn around.
There is actually two documents that are uploaded, there is a exhibit two, I believe, um, that is a. Yes, so, uh, this one, if you.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
That's exactly what I'm looking at.
I was looking at a different one on the screen.
Oh, okay, so no.
I had a site plan, which is exhibit three, and then I was.
Yeah.
Just pay up all this one.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's exactly what I'm looking at, so, for example. Your proposed co- crosswalk right there is not attaching, it's attaching to the sidewalk, but that needs a handicap, that needs a handicap access to that sidewalk. That needs to be shown on the plans and that needs to be detailed. On the other side of the, of the sidewalk, on the left hand side of the si- of the crosswalk. That's grass. So you're not connecting to the parking lot at that point, you're just connecting to grass, so. Uh, someone's gonna have to walk across, either walk out in the road or walk across the grass to get over there. If you drive up West Street. Uh, there's also no handicap spots shown, that, it says three handicap, two handicap spots. But, oh, there they are, right there.
Yep, on the top right.
They are right there, I'm sorry, so if you. You're, how is your process gonna work, are you gonna drive up, are the parents gonna drive up West Street and then drop off where it says walkway to entrance?
So our hope was that pe- people, if they're coming on the church street, they can turn into the, turn left into the parking lot. From the church street, are there.
Yep.
And then they can use the crosswalk to cross over to the existing sidewalk and use that to get into the building.
Okay.
I believe that's what currently people do to get into the church as well.
It, it is, it is how they get into the church, in the rain, in the snow and everything else, that's how it's done. So, but, but what I'm saying is about that, the, the crosswalk that you have right there.
Right.
There are no details shown as, I mean, at all. So the, so you, you, I think you just have to be a little bit more detailed on, on that and how handicap people. Are going to get to. Get into the building.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Get into the building, um, can I ask my architect Jessica who's online to just.
Jessica has.
Questions on that.
Jessica has her hand raised, so.
Okay, perfect.
I think she's prepared to answer this maybe, or speak to it anyway.
Jessica.
I don't know if you, hopefully you can hear me okay, um, at this point, this is a con- you know, conceptual overview of the space. Um, and of the, of the, of the, um, the site, um, we are. We will be having a full, um. Site plan done of the space because, but because of the time limit. We have the, the other exhibit that you had, exhibit three up, the site plan, the older one up, and then. Once we get sort of further along in the process, that will be a, a full site plan with. The extensive amount of more information than we're showing right now, um. So we were showing sort of what was today and sort of slight changes, um, in a conceptual way to see what the, how the, the. Board would respond to that, um, and how we could accommodate, um, kitty time as well, so. Um, I agree, it is light right now in detail, um, we, we, we do plan on going further, we just. The, the biggest decision that we need to see is if this is even a plausible. Change of use before we go into getting different engineers involved in this whole, whole spot, so.
Mr. Chair, yes, well, I think it's a plausible use, I think it's a great use, okay, but, but, but here, here's the thing. You have to be a lot more detailed than how you are and maybe, I, I, and maybe, you know, we have a, uh. You know, this is for a site plan approval.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, you haven't purchased the property yet, I'm assuming.
Yes, we haven't.
No, and you're trying to find out whether you wanna purchase, purchase the property.
Without spending in our.
I understand, I understand. You just, you're a little, you're a little early to the, to the, you know, to the game here. Um, but, uh, I mean, I personally, I think it's a great use for the pri- piece of property. I think, I think it'll work. But you need a lot more detail on your plans before you can.
Yeah.
You know, get a site plan approval, that's for sure.
We, procedurally. We couldn't give a site plan approval with what we have. Uh, we have to have a proper, you know, full. Site plan. Um, at the very least. Um. Sometimes what you're trying to accomplish can be accomplished by just having a meeting with us without an application and so on for, for a permit. In any case, you're here, um, well, we'll, we'll see how many of the public out there have something to say about this.
So many people sitting out there.
Yeah.
Um. I'm interested, how many students are we talking about?
We are trying to get a license for eighty one children.
Eighty one. Okay, and I'm curious, I, I don't know the inside of the building very well, but I, I s- I thought I remembered that. In the sanctuary, the main, the main room, I thought that was sloped. No, it's a flat floor and just a raised.
It's level and, and so all of the pews in the, in the church. Actually work on a, on a, on a track and they can all open up and they go right into a, uh, what you consider it a big closet. All of the, all of the pews and it makes a hall. That, that actually works out great for you guys, you know, that's, uh.
Okay, cause I saw the, the, the plan seemed to show. You know, that, there was flat floor there.
Yeah, there is, yeah, they, all those pews go right into a little closet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I. I th- I think that, uh. Well, every, everybody, looks like everybody is happy, um, but, um. We, we, we couldn't, you know, we'd have to deny it if this was all the information we had, so you may want to either, well. Uh, ask to continue until you have a plan or maybe withdraw.
I, I think we have to keep in mind that this is a Dover Amendment use.
Yes.
And what that means is that we are permitted to regulate specifically only. The bulk and height of structures, yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage. We cannot regulate anything else under the Dover Amendment, so this is basically a, it's pretty much a guaranteed approval. Under the Dover Amendment. And. The board has to be cognizant of that in terms of thinking about what additional information we want to request.
One thing to, that I just want to add and bring to board's knowledge is also that the only changes we are doing in the building is going to be inside the building.
Yeah, no.
We are not planning at this point to do any outdoor changes in the building, so we are not going to touch the parking lot or. Touch the, um, any grass area or any outside lighting. That was part of the reason we were hoping that we can use this conceptual design to get the site plan approval. And not go for a full site plan.
Yeah.
And one of the rev- the waiver document that we had submitted, we had asked for specifically for a waiver for a site plan. Um, because site plan involves the landscape and everything outside. But we are hoping that since we're only doing renovation inside the building, we are showing everything that we are planning to do inside the building and not touch anything outside. Um. So our hope is that we can use the documents that we have today to, and give you all the details that you need in person. For different other things or other questions.
What's the wish of the board members?
Mr. Chair, Natalia's handing.
We have hands up.
And I will say.
Go on Natalia.
I just wanted to mention that, um, the applicant has met on several occasions and discussed the plans, uh, prior to filing with the board. And the meetings included the Building Commissioner and the Planning Director.
So. Mr. Chair, my, my comments, number one. Yes, Dover Amendment makes this not really something that. Is that, that relevant, but I'll, I do have some concerns on how traffic will be on church street. And how the drop off will go, like I said, Dover Amendment, that's not really going to the thing, but this is a general thing, I don't have any concerns on the intersections, I think those. You, the traffic patterns in those intersections are high enough that this isn't gonna really affect it. But I, the actual how the traffic flows, like Mr. Reed was mentioning, is going to be something that I'm interested in and having the narrative of how it goes. I'm also not, my memory says West Street is a private way right now.
It is a dead end road, yes.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how much our decision can impact or like how the traffic flow is involved on West Street itself, as far as anyone driving up in West Street.
Right, it is actually, I don't want to interrupt you, but I just wanted to add that it is actually a really good thing for us or for the building that it is on West Street and it's a dead end street. Because we want that road to be less traffic, so the kids, when they're crossing that crosswalk, they're not crossing a busy road.
Understood, and agreed.
And people can come in, there are three, um, three entrances to that parking lot on Nine West, there is. One from the West Street and two from the church street, so there is enough space that people can either come in to the West Street, take a left, get into the parking lot and get out into the church street. Out of the two other exits, or they can even come in from the church street, uh, get into the exit and get into the parking lot, there are two ways to get in. And take a lot, like a right out of the vest and get out then that way.
Absolutely, one thing that, that does bring me to one of my points, I was about to say as well is that parking lot, when it was operating as a church. During church service, it would generally be packed like sardines, so to speak, if people would just pull in there, some people would pull up on the, on the grass berms.
I have seen.
And it was, like, if you get stuck in the middle there, you have to wait till pretty much almost everyone else around you leaves in order for you to be able to pull away. And that. My memory says a lot of those parking line, you know, parking space lines have pretty much completely faded. So one thing that I would want, definitely want to see as far as doing a site plan approval for my, you know, self here is the actual. You know, spaces laid out as, you know, full site plan, so we can actually see, you do have this number space, you do have the driving radiuses, you to, to pull in and out of that parking lot, the entrances you want. The, I am concerned about the, the crossing, you know, the crossing itself being, you know, for handicap accessible and into a, a grass berm. So, you know, those are some concerns I have, I think. I think this is a great use, I don't think I could vote to approve the site plan I have in front of me tonight.
So if we look at the other document, the exhibit two, um, that was up earlier. And the parking lot. Would you like to say something, Mr. Chairman?
But if, I didn't hear Dave say anything about approving parking lots or crosswalks or any of that. I think whatever approval we give would. Specifically. Outline the things that we were. Uh, acting on.
The my takeaway of it, Mr. Mr. Robbins, Mr. Chair, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Knowing that there is adequate parking. For appropriately dedicated spaces is something that we still. Are allowed like.
The Dover amendment allows us to regulate parking and. We have in front of us a diagram showing. The layout of the parking lot, the main parking lot. And the staff only parking lot to the right of this picture. I believe I read in the narrative a a an explanation of the number of parking spots that employees will be expected. The total number of parking spots you have, the number of parking spots expected to be occupied by employees. The number of parking spots expected to be occupied by. You know, parents dropping off and picking up.
Definitely have more parking than we would require, so we need. As per the bylaws for Grafton, we are required to have one parking spot per employee. We will have on a busiest day at the biggest shift, we will have a maximum of twenty employees. So we have twenty spaces for employees and for children for during the drop off and pickup. Hours, we usually just need one parking spot for five children. Our drop off is staggered between seven AM to nine thirty AM or four to five thirty PM. And we, based on that calc- our calculations, we only needed thirty-five parking spots and we have fifty-three.
So I think the applicant has. Demonstrated compliance with the zoning bylaws parking requirements for this. And again, going back to the. allowable regulations under the door Dover amendment. The structure isn't changing, so we. There's no issue with the bulk and height of structures, yard sizes, that's not changing. Setbacks and those are all, I I think that's. Somewhere in here, it's 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 noted that the setbacks meet. Zoning requirements. Open space, there's really nothing. Nothing about that that needs to be dealt with here. Building coverage requirements. I think this. Falls within the zoning bylaws. And I'd I'd have to recheck numbers on it, but since the building is not changing. I think that's covered, so. I think in terms of what the board is allowed to regulate under Dover. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with what they need to comply with. Other aspects of this. You know, the applicant is. Offering or is is proposing a crosswalk. The Dover amendment doesn't allow us to regulate that. Uh, however, that would fall under whatever. General requirements, the building inspector or some other laws may have regarding particularly. Regarding handicapped access, those details are are covered by other laws. And. Whatever we say, you're also, as you, as I'm sure you know, you're obligated to comply with all other applicable laws and regulations. So. As far as I can tell. Although we're interested in more details. Um, in terms of what the board is allowed to regulate, I don't know that we're missing any information.
Before we go too much further, is there anyone? Here? Or out on the internet who wants to comment on this? Raise your hand now. I don't see any hands.
We have. Only one Zoom attendee and he's not raising his hand.
So, Ray, what do you think?
Well, you know, I I understand what what uh, what Dave's saying. You know, but if you look at this. He- if you look at the other site plan, the original or the. From uh, wherever it is. Go to the go to the other site plan.
Two thousand four or something like that.
Something like that. It's not. I mean, it's not showing the parking lot, so. Again, I don't, you know, I don't know um. Well, let's put it this way. I don't think there's anywhere close to being enough detail on this piece of on this site plan to. You know, for the board to vote on it, but that's that's my opinion. This site plan here that is that is a Roman Catholic bishop. You know, shows the church, shows the rectory, shows a shed and shows parcel A. It doesn't show the parking lot, it doesn't show the spaces, it doesn't show a crosswalk, it doesn't show the road. It it doesn't show really anything, so. Again, I understand what Dave's talking about. If you approve this as as it as it's shown. Hopefully, the building department or who else, who somebody else is gonna. Review this and make, not make you, but but have them revise their site plan. And again, I understand what you're doing. You'll see and if you can buy this, if this is gonna work and you want to buy this piece of property. I would take a shot at that, but that's uh. I would go for it, but. It's it's just not enough detail here. You know, the the. The crosswalk. It goes into grass. Where does it go from there? You know, how did how do the people get to the parking lot? If if you look at that, if you look at that and you say, okay, well, it's gonna go right into the parking, well, now you lose this parking space. So there's there's a bunch of stuff. Just I would like to see the applicant come back with a little more detail on the plan. And. Go from there.
Yeah.
I.
Not that I want him, but I I want push people off two weeks or anything like that. But I find it very hard to be able to approve this like that.
Yeah, I, at least for me, when I see site plan approval and. This one that's on the screen right now, exhibit three from two thousand four. Is the only one that has. Any measurements at all. I think we need at least something that shows. Like Mr. Mead said, the parking lots, like if. What's actually there right now and. I don't. Need a ton of detail, you know, I would like a ton of detail, but I don't need a ton of detail, but I I think this not showing. Parking lots or any and the other one not having any measurement at all.
And not even any property line.
Yeah, exactly, is a is a concern.
I'm I'm thinking along the lines that a decision. It says, here are the things that we. Looked at and approved. You know, aligned with what Dave outlined. And.
Contingent on these things.
And and well. We find whatever the things are. Based on the material presented. And make it very clear. Where we're not doing. Approval, the 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 full site plan. Approval that we would. In a nor- in a. Normal case. So that. We've, you know, we've. Said what we're talking about here.
Yeah, we sometimes, in fact, we fairly typically. Do something sort of along that line in a very limited sense. Where we have decisions that say. This decision does not approve any signage associated with the project, so it's putting. It it's it's explaining what this decision is approving and what it's not approving. This should not be construed as approving, you know, any. Any d- anything with respect to a crosswalk, to take that as one example. That if, you know, if we were to. Think of this as a as as an approval that's strictly limited by the Dover amendment. Then it helped, I think it would help, as Bob suggested, to be. To be explicit about. What. What this decision is not approving or disapproving. That this decision doesn't speak. For example, if we want to take that that particular point of view, we would want to say this decision does not speak to the crosswalk. We could. You know, so sort of a file, we could request that the board be supplied with additional information. As a sort of as a condition of approval, but. You know, in terms of what we're actually allowed to approve. You know, if nothing else, I think I I'd have to agree with Bob that we would want. We would want to be very clear about what we are and are not. Including in the approval.
This this is kind of complicated, the crosswalk goes across. A private way.
Yeah.
So I don't know how the rules apply.
I don't know, I'm not aware that it's a private way.
It is a private way, the court decided when we uh.
That came up in a previous project.
It doesn't say that on the on the on the sign, it doesn't say private way.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't matter, um. We had. If you'd like to go back through a few years of litigation.
No, no, I'm just saying it doesn't say it on the side.
About a subdivision that wanted to build. Off the end of this road. Continuing into the.
Yes, that's right.
Into the wood.
Yes, it was.
You you'll find out all about that.
But but the thing the thing is, is that prior to you. Purchasing this property. You're gonna do a site plan, correct? A full site plan.
We have to do the, is that the alter survey and everything that we have?
Yeah, you have to do, yeah, you have to do a total survey, you have to show the everything that's on the plans and everything that prior to you purchasing it. Because otherwise, you can't purchase it off what's sitting right there.
And and that's why we're just trying to do things in parallel because that's the bank working on, the attorney is doing the title inspection and the alter survey and everything, but. Again, we also want to make sure from the church perspective, close the building so we know it's a feasible project, we can move forward with it. And that's why.
But that's their problem.
No, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if you're gonna do the, if you have to do the the full site plan to to purchase the building.
I I don't know what the.
It would probably be. Probably not be inappropriate for us as a board to. Get the advice of counsel. On how we want to treat this too. I mean. I think I understand correctly what we need to do under the Dover amendment. It would be helpful to have counsel. Either confirm that or explain what more we could do.
Okay. That means you'd want to. Request a continuation of the hearing. While we get our staff to contact our counsel and. Get some advice on this Dover. Situation and what whether what we're talking about.
I think probably most of us certain. From this conversation, I think most of us would be interested. In seeing more detail, you know, a more detailed site plan and detail about the crosswalk, but whether. Whether whether we can let that influence our decision is another question. But I think my sense here is. That the board is really really wants to approve this. Just want to make sure that we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed. We should be able to put staff to work on this. Over the next couple of weeks. And in any case. And I have to, you know, I find myself reminding 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 myself and others about this pretty much every time. In any case, if we were to close the hearing tonight. There would be no decision available until. Two weeks from tonight anyway. So in a case, in in cases where. Things are maybe a little bit up in the air. Staff can proceed to work on a decision. We can keep the hearing open just in case something pops up that. Needs needs further clarification. But in. It's a good chance that in two weeks. One way or the other, in two weeks, the board would be likely would be ready to. Vote on a decision and approve the project.
I. With the holiday and with some of the staff being out right now, I would not. Bet on. A decision being ready to vote on, even if no other information is necessary.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure how we get. Counsel. That quickly. Given the who's where, when. Uh, and the holidays and whatnot.
I said, it does sound.
I I think my. I like my plan.
You always lick your plan up.
Unlike you, who never does, right?
No, I don't, so so the. No, so the 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 thing is, is that we we contact counsel to give us. A ruling on the Dover. Amendment and. Uh, and then um. They can, they will change. If they have to, change their site plan based on that. I just want to get that straight.
That's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they. If they ask us, if they ask to continue. Then. There's an option, i- if counsel says we do need more or or we can ask for more. Then they'll have the opportunity to do that within this hearing. If we close the hearing tonight. If he says we need more. They have to start over with a new hearing. Because once the hearings closed, we can't reopen it and bring in more. Information.
Seemed like it would be. The best path forward would be to continue the hearing, the only question is the date. We could continue it to December eighth. At which point there.
Nat- Natalia, um, um. Fiona gets back when?
Fiona, I think, be back next week.
Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Next Monday.
So she'll have. How long with all of this? Two.
Not one week.
Monday, so she has.
She would have a week.
She'd have five days.
Five, that's not, that's not.
That's probably not enough time to get in, but you never know.
Yeah, so. I think the. For the applicants, the our next meeting is December eighth. The next meeting after that is December twenty-second. If you. If you ask to continue the hearing, you'll you'll have to verbally ask us, you know, that you want to continue it and then you're gonna form a file if you do. To continue the. To continue the hearing. To whichever date you select, we can even look into the next year's calendar if you want. And then. If you say December eighth. And we don't have the information back yet, you can always. You know, send an email to the staff saying, I wish to continue to December twenty-second because we have nothing else to do right now, basically. And, you know, so either way, you can continue, you know, the board typically grants continuation requests, I haven't been on here and. One has been denied, never. But.
So if we say, let's continue it for December eighth, um, how would we know if we, if the board has everything that they. Wanted, we will reach out to Natalia and ask if she.
Yeah, staff can be in touch with you back and forth and.
Yeah, you'll communicate with staff as ne- as needed to determine.
Okay, so let's continue for December eighth.
Yeah, and like I said.
Want us to say that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we want we want you to say that and then we want you to.
Again, it seems it seems clear that the board would like to approve this, we just want to make sure that. We've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed, that we have. The information that. We would. I want to say we have the information we need, but you know, it's kind of goes pot- potentially beyond that, that there's. Some information that. That we are interested in, but may not influence our decision at all. But still, we'd like to know, the the more we know about it, the better.
Yeah, what we know, then the town knows, and that's not bad.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the board accepting grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing until December eighth, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Palermo.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Me?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Zalim Ali votes aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. You you right now, you said you were in Marlboro?
Northborough.
Oh, Northborough.
Live in Northborough, our school's in Marlboro.
But but I was thinking about going through this in Marlboro, I, you know, that's a city, right? And. No. Northborough is okay. Well. You know. It's not Grafton, but it's still okay.
Well, we'll we'll see where we are in two weeks and. Let's figure out.
Do I bring this back?
Yeah, I can come with you.
So we're done with that. I don't think there are any other lawful, um, uh, anything else may lawfully come before us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is that your, is that your book right there?
No, it's not actually. It was already there.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn, that's not a debatable.
Mr. Palermo.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Dallamoli votes aye.
We are adjourned.